Meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the record, we are just one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comments speak to agenda items only, and any topic related to the agenda may be addressed except for personnel or specific student issues. Any emails received regarding curriculum concerns will be forwarded to the appropriate administrator to address. If an individual cannot attend a meeting due to unusual circumstances, please indicate in an email to the district clerk. School Board encourages public participation at its meetings to allow for efficiency in conducting meetings and to give each speaker a fair opportunity to present his or her views. The following shall apply to the public speaking portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall state their name. Any questions or concerns should be submitted in writing. Speaker's contact information, name, address, phone number. Each speaker shall be limited to a time approximately five minutes. This has been agreed upon by the board. The board will not permit discussion involving individual personnel or students. Direct all remarks to the chair. Community members may not call individual board members nor debate other community members in attendance. Members of the community are encouraged to also present their comments in writing. Undo interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Board of Education business will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. At this moment in time, we have a special presentation. Oh, yeah. Does anybody with anger left to speak in public comments right now? Okay. We now have a presentation on Leaders of the Pack, which is where we recognize an individual from each one of our three buildings for all the good things that they do. Start out with elementary school. Mr. Darling. And Ms. Samuel.
Good evening, everyone. This is Declan Gordon, and he's a very hardworking, respectful, responsible kindergarten student. Per his teachers, he's always willing to help his peers, teachers throughout the day. He is kind, compassionate towards others, and he strives to do his best work every day. We are also proud of him, and we want to congratulate the family, and congratulations to you, Declan.
Middle School. Hello, okay. So Highland Middle School selected Nicholas Quirk Hall as our Student of the Month for the month of January, and he's in eighth grade. So first, I'm going to read you a few things that our teachers and staff had to say about Nicholas, and then I'll share a few other things too. So Mrs. Coburn, who couldn't make it here tonight, wanted to say this. Nick was chosen by our HMS staff, including myself and Mr. Carnright, because of the role model he has become as a student. He is a student who looks out for his peers, works hard, and shows respect for all staff in the building. He's a good friend, and students seek out his advice and friendship. A couple months ago, a friend of Nick's broke his wrist. Nick wanted to help, and he came up with a plan to help a student at his locker with his belongings and also to make sure that the student got to class okay. Nick went out of his way to ask for Mrs. Coburn's permission to help and was responsible enough to remember each day to come into the main office to pick up and drop off a key to help make the locker piece a little easier, and so you didn't have to twist the lock every time. He did this without wanting recognition or attention. He did it because it was right. Last week, Nick overheard some students that were unkind. Nick chose to come to the main office to share with me and Mrs. Coburn what he had heard so we could take a look at the situation and move on from there. This is yet another example of Nick leading by example and not feeding into middle school drama by but staying above it and focused on positive interactions. Nick has an infectious smile that instantly can put you in a better mood. He's a great listener and is always willing to help a student or staff member without even having to ask. We're lucky to have Nick and are honored to recognize him as our February Leader of the Pack. So that was from Mrs. Coburn. Then this one is for a few of his teachers wrote some really nice things too I wanted to share. Sorry for being long-winded, but these are great. Nick is a calming spirit and radiates positivity wherever he goes. Often, he does not recognize his impact on others, but I assure you that his fellow classmates and teachers enjoy very much being in his presence. Without a second thought, he's the first one to volunteer to help others and be at their side before they can ask. He's probably shaking his head right now in disbelief due to his humble nature, but, Nick, you should know that you are someone we feel honored to have at Highland. Thank you for sharing your joy of life with all of us. And I know personally, Nick and I have become kind of friendly, and we like to talk about music, and sometimes we play guitar in the hallways, which is always cool. He's better than me, but, you know, I'm working on it. So congratulations, and use yours to be. Talking to the mic. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Mr. Zimmer and myself, and Mrs. Zimmer could not be here this evening, we at Highland High School would like to recognize Natasha McKenna, or as I call her, Tash-Tash, for being an outstanding individual. Many of her teachers sent me a lot of accolades to read, about 10 pages worth, but I'm not reading 10 pages, don't worry. One of her teachers is here this evening to support her, Mr. Miller, thank you for being here. Mr. Miller says Natasha is an overall great person who has a genuine kindness and empathy about her that helps those around her be the best version of themselves they can be. She exemplifies integrity and is one who does the right thing, not because a teacher or coach is watching or listening, but because simply it's the right thing to do. Ms. Babino says, "I love Natasha. She is such a sweet person. She shows patience with our freshmen in our crafts class as I have watched her go out of her way to help them with their projects." Mr. Casalino says, "I can count on Natasha to work well in any group, and because she is so driven to succeed, friendly, and is inquisitive, she makes everyone around her better." Ms. Wiston adds, "Natasha is always eager to learn and motivated to come to a solution on her own. Her smile is contagious and warms every heart in the room." How could they see her smile? Your mask is on. I guess it's the eyes, right? Coach Reed adds, "Natasha is an amazing person, is kind, considerate, and fun." And Coach Bragg adds, "Natasha is a very hard worker in sports and in the classroom. She has so much integrity and is extremely kind to others, has a great sense of humor, and is always smiling. She is just wonderful to be around." Congratulations to Natasha McKenna.
Thank you. Principals' monthly reports.
Thank you. I didn't mean to clear the room out, but happy New Year, everybody. Good to see you all. A few additions that I have. I'd like to thank Maggie and the Interact Club. I see Maggie's not here tonight, but they did come to the elementary school on the 23rd from an idea of their own. At the high school here last year, they had created holiday cards to deliver to local nursing homes, and Maggie and the Interact Club wanted to expand that to the elementary school this year. And so as a result of that, every elementary school student ended up making a holiday card that was delivered to one of the nursing homes in the area. And so we'd like to thank, you know, the club on behalf of their time. The teachers were ecstatic to see some of their old students back in the building, and the students were very engaged in the discussion about, you know, why we would make holiday cards for people in nursing homes, where they were going, and to shed some positivity and share some positivity with some of those folks. So, you know, thanks to that group. In addition to that, in the principal's report, you probably saw the postcard activity that some of our fifth-grade classrooms have been engaging in. And basically, that's an opportunity for them to learn about the states and our country in a more interesting way. And so what they did was they reached out to family and friends that they know across the country and asked them to send some postcards to the elementary school building so that they could share those postcards with the class and create kind of a montage in the hallway of, you know, connections across the country. And so the classes have been really excited to share some of those postcards of family and friends with their classmates. They've also received some postcards from Japan and some other areas as well, but we are still in need of North Dakota, Nebraska, Oklahoma, and Oregon to complete the country map there. So if you know anybody in those states, please feel free to have them send a postcard to the elementary school because we are expanding upon our definition of family and friends with our students. So finally, the PBIS committee took time to reorganize and rebrand the four tenants that they had identified years ago. And so they are still the same tenants, but we reorganized them into the acronym BARC. And we hope that using that acronym with the students and some of the posters that you've seen that Bosie's are working on helps for those tenants to stick in our building a little bit more and help to reinvigorate that program a little bit. So we're very excited about that. Lastly, I just wanted to share that we did learn today that Clink is on hold for the time being. Typically, they start that program right about now or by the end of this month, so we were starting to get a little skeptical when we hadn't seen anything. So as soon as that's back up and running, we'll be sure to get that information out because we do have, it seems like thousands of bottles in our basement currently. So any questions about the principal's report?
No questions, just overall comment on the holiday cards, just what a win it is all around. I know my kids love that the high schoolers came down. Actually, I think the day that maybe we were supposed to do it, they had a delay, and actually, that was the comment I heard. "Oh, no, now they're not going to come." So they were very excited that they were able to reschedule that. So great job from the Interact Club and everybody who helped organize that.
Yeah, and I think we had about 25 high schoolers come, and so they were able to get to every classroom for half an hour, and it only took them, you know, a total of two hours in the building to do that. So it really didn't impact their full, you know, their full schedule either, and it worked out very nicely. Thank you all.
All right. So Mrs. Coburn just gave me one addition to tonight, to her report that she submitted. So our National Junior Autism Society will be hosting a personal care drive from January 14th through 31st. Items that are collecting include socks, tissues, toothpaste, Band-Aids, bath soap, dental floss, toothbrushes, hair care products, things like that, that we will be donating to a local pantry. And then the items are going to be dropped off in a box in the main lobby at the middle school. This is an idea that NJHS kind of came up with, one of the many that they're really working on, which is fantastic. So that is my addition. Are there any questions? All right, you led me off easy, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, everyone. Here to represent Mr. Zimmer, who could not be here this evening. He had nothing to add to his report. On behalf of Mr. Zimmer, myself, and the PTSA, we'd like to take a moment just to recognize our amazing school board during National School Board Appreciation Month. Maggie will be here shortly. She has something to add to that as well, and she will also be adding in Mr. Zimmer's report some information on the Interact Club that Mr. Carmine was just talking about. I'm sorry, Mr. Darling was just talking about. And other than that, Mrs. Zimmer had no other additions. That's all for the high school. Any questions? Thank you. And again, congratulations on all the work that you do for our community, for Highland. It's a, we have a pretty amazing district, and thankfully, we have an amazing school board that heads that up. So take this time to be recognized during our National School Board Appreciation Month. And when you're leaving tonight, take a look at the sign. There's a message on that for you as well.
Thank you. Directors' monthly reports.
I don't think any questions, just want to acknowledge everybody, teaching staff, from the top down to the bottom, keeping everybody in school and keeping everybody safe as possible. Thank you for all that you guys do.
Thank you. No questions? Job well done? Everybody's good? We are now at the consent agenda, part of our agenda. Do we, as a board, does anybody have any questions on this right now? Good? All right, we'll be looking at A1, A1 through D2. Another motion. Heather and Sue. At this moment in time, again, no questions, all good?
Is Maria here tonight? You're breaking my heart. Congratulations, but I'm going to be so sad not to have you here. Yes, let's pull this, yes, let's pull this out of the agenda. Yes, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, a ball in favor. Obviously, no one opposed. That'd be a six-nothing.
Good evening, everyone. I did want to take a moment to recognize Maria McCarthy, who will be retiring from Highland Central Schools after just incomparable dedication, not only as the director of Food Services, but before that in the program, and also a Highland grad that I didn't realize till recently. So thank you for your years of service. We'll do and say a lot more at our big end-of-year celebration, but didn't want this to go by without recognizing her. And I also wanted to recognize Cody Weaver, who received tenure this evening. He is a science teacher at our middle school. Very fortunately, had an addition to his family recently, so he's not here this evening, but we will again recognize him at our big celebration at the end of the year. But very excited to have Cody, one of my former students, on our staff and really doing a nice job with the middle school science program.
Thank you, Sarah.
She should be here.
She's in route.
She will be a little late, so maybe we can't get her towards later on in the agenda.
Yeah, we'll move her a little further down on the agenda.
Hello, all right. We are, in my department, getting started with what we call our busy season, really, with annual reviews. So tomorrow, we will be beginning our big rollover where we prepare all of our electronic documents for IEPs for our teachers to begin inputting information for students as we plan for next year. So we're in planning and looking at all of our programs, our district placements, and making, you know, talking about our recommendations of where we think students are going to be next year and where, what we think we'll need. It is difficult to do it this, I'll say this, early in the year, but that's part of the process, is really planning ahead and trying to have the foresight, and the teachers really do a great job of planning for that and talking about that throughout the year, about things that we're going to need. So we'll be beginning, holding our annual reviews in February, and they will carry through, hopefully, through about May or June as we hold all of our meetings for our students. Just to touch upon what Mr. Darling had said earlier, I know it was a great experience for the students. I actually had a lot of feedback from the staff, and I didn't even tell him this. A lot of the staff members that saw old students coming back, and one of the things that I was happy to hear was some of the students sharing that they were going to go into education as a result of some of their experiences from those teachers that they had years ago at the elementary school. So that was a big positive for me to hear, and they talked about how well it was run and how well the high school students really did, keeping going on pace for that. As you said, they moved through it, and they got through all the classrooms in a good, timely manner, and it was a great experience for all. So nice job, Mr. Darling, and the Interact Club from the high school. I know we had a question about some of the American Rescue Plan funding for, so out of the just over $4 million, at this point, we had about $1 million approved back in July, and that was predominantly all salaries and benefits for some of the positions that we added this year, so some of the social workers, some additional AIS staff. And then the other grants were really split into a number of different grants for the additional money. So all of those grants have been submitted on the portal. It looks like our second round was approved, but it hasn't quite made it through Grants Finance yet, and those grants carry through through 2024. So for some of the spending on those ones that haven't been approved yet, we don't have any spending because we're waiting on it. And sometimes when they look through those, they'll come back with questions, and we'll work through it with them on what our intent was, just to make sure that the costs are aligned.
Will that also be another million, or?
So the total was just over $4 million, so the $1 million was approved in July. Well, one was submitted for $2.3 million in the fall. That's the one that we believe is approved. It just hasn't gotten completely through Grants Finance. And then recently, there was a New York State Reserve portion that was actually separated out into three separate grants focused on some after-school programs in very specific areas. So that was submitted, but we haven't received any feedback on that yet. So that would be the additional $700,000 and a little bit of change on top of that to get to that $4 million mark. Any questions?
Maggie, are you ready to step up? Or do you need some time? Okay, can you hear me? All right. So I want to start off with the high school. We did the cards for the holidays, and like I said before, we were planning on doing that, but we went through with it. We went to the elementary school. It did get delayed because of a two-hour delay, but we ended up going the next day. It was really great. And because of that, we actually got an offer from Senator Hinshi to be part of their Valentine's Day cards for the seniors program. And we'll be doing that, we emailed her back today telling her we're very interested, and we'll see how that goes for Valentine's Day. And also for the high school, we had our first MUN conference that I talked about last time, and it was very productive, so we decided to schedule a second one, and that will be with New Pots this time. So they have a club, and we're getting them involved also, and that will be in February. At the middle school, the Musical Theater Club is planning their first musical, and sadly, all county band has been canceled due to COVID, but it is still on for chorus at this time. And finally, NISM auditions for band will also be in April. For the elementary school, many of the students were extremely engaged and excited to work on the cards with us. I walked into several classrooms just to make sure everything was okay, and they were all very excited. Some of them even made more than one, so it was great. We ended up getting around $2,000 in total that we donated to a bunch of different nursing homes. That was great. And we are really hoping that we'll be able to travel back there again for another event. Also, last time, I talked to you all about a survey that I was planning on making for all the students in the district to talk about anything that they want to bring up to the board that I could potentially say to you guys if I think it's appropriate. So I made this survey. I haven't sent it out yet because I wanted to go over it with you first to make sure all the questions were good and if you wanted to add anything. So so far, it's just four simple questions. You just put your name and your grade, which are both required because I wanted to make sure that they're legit questions and they're not just jokes, because obviously that's going to happen. And then also any events that they'd like to see at the high school, anything new, and then any questions that they have for us, because sometimes it can be intimidating for students to sit and ask questions, so maybe this could be an outlet for them to start doing that and then get involved. And this month is also Board of Education Appreciation Month, so I have a little gift for all of you from the PTSA. Right here. Should I hand them out now? Okay. All right. So it also says that it's for... So it also says that it's for the Appreciation Month on the board of the month, so if you don't know.
Thank you very much, Maggie.
I know that I had mentioned before you were here, so just to reiterate how much the elementary school kids really enjoyed your presence. Like I said, I knew that there was a delay because as soon as you called the delay in the morning, my daughter was bummed because she said, "Now that means they're not coming. I don't want to go to school." So the next day, she was delighted when she came home. And it's funny that, you know, they say that they made quick rounds through the school, because in conversations with her, it sounded like you were there all day, just with the impact. So, thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Thank you.
We get a two-for-one tonight. Mr. Fear makes his apologies for not being able to be here. A couple of updates. First of all, the Highland Educational Foundation, in really looking at COVID cases and thinking about our snowball event, we have decided to postpone that event. We're hoping to maybe hold it late April, early May instead, get through this surge, and hopefully, be able to do it then. So we're disappointed to not have it in February, but it's not gone completely, but hoping that we can still have it this year. We will give you an updated date as soon as we have one. I wanted to update you, there's lots of COVID updates for you, for the community, but before I give you all the new information, I want to give a very sincere thank you to all of our staff. Every department, every building has been covering for one another, been stretching what we have to make it go further to keep our students in school, and we really appreciate all of that across the board. It has made a tremendous difference for our students. And, you know, this has been a long, a long, long haul, but people are continuing to support one another, and we really appreciate that tremendously. We are getting new updates on things like quarantining and test-to-stay. Literally, at nine o'clock last night, they changed guidance once again, so I do want to go through that a little bit so that everyone is clear on exactly what some of the terms mean, as well as what the status is as of right this moment. But I have heard some, there may be more changes coming, so definitely stay tuned. First of all, we did start our test-to-stay program. This is for unvaccinated students and adults only who have been exposed to COVID in the school setting. With that, they are able to test here at school on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings from 6:30 in the morning till 8:30 in the morning. Parents would bring their students here at the high school in the auditorium. A representative from Village Apothecary does the test. They wait for 15 minutes. Once they are negative, they're able to go to their school that day. It started as a seven-day testing protocol. We just received word last night that it's actually now a five-day quarantine. So to test-to-stay, you'd need to test negative twice within that five-day period. We're still offering Monday, Wednesday, Friday at school. School nurses are explaining that every time that we do the contact tracing and realize that we have an unvaccinated student who's been exposed. I went very, we had our first morning yesterday. It went very smoothly, even with the delay. We had no students that were positive, so that was great. So that's 20 students that we were able to have in school that would not have been in school otherwise. So another change that was made to guidance as per the CDC, and then the State Department of Health, and now Ulster County Department of Health, is that both vaccinated as well as unvaccinated students who test positive only need to quarantine for five days if they are asymptomatic. So if they test positive because they were exposed, or they know someone in their family, whatever it was, and they're positive, but they have no symptoms, they are able to return to school after five days. So essentially, on the sixth day, they can return to school. If they have symptoms, they need to evaluate their symptoms on that fifth day. If they still have a fever, if they have a productive cough, or they have a rummy nose or sneezing, they are not able to come back after that five days. But it does allow, because we know in this recent uptick in cases that many people are asymptomatic, it does shorten the time for quarantine. So again, our nurses are doing a phenomenal job of calling parents and walking them through all of these changes. For students and adults who are fully vaccinated, meaning they've had two doses and it's two weeks past that, or they've gotten their booster shot, they do not need to quarantine if they have been exposed. So they can just go along. But they should be monitoring their symptoms, and they should be, you know, we're masking in schools anyway, but they should be masking in all areas of their life. Those who are asymptomatic, again, they should be monitoring symptoms. But that is a big change. It's a lot less time that students may be out of school. You know, I also want to extend our thanks to our whole community of parents. We understand that this has been a burden for a very long time, and we appreciate your cooperation and your grace with our nurses when they call to let you know what's going on with your particular child or student. But, you know, it is very confusing, and things are changing rapidly. So, you know, try to keep on top of things, but also, we try to give you the most updated information that we can when we can. I think that's all I have. Also, extend our thanks to the school board for the work that they do to support our students and our staff. I think that they're a big part of the success that we've shown through the entire pandemic. It's really been helpful. I don't remember if we met, we did have in-person concerts right before the end of the year. I don't remember, I think that was after our last meeting. So each of the three buildings, the elementary, middle, and high school had both chorus and band concerts. It was wonderful to see the students here in person, even with masks on. It's, you know, it was just wonderful to have them doing what they're, you know, they practice to do. And truthfully, I was so blown away by the skill and the talent that we have, especially after a year where their entire program was all remote. You know, our performing arts teachers have done a tremendous job keeping their groups together. We actually have even larger numbers this year, rather than losing a lot of students because of that remote. So, great job there. And like I said, very exciting. We're getting started with practices for our school musical, both at the high school and the middle school. So exciting things happening. Hopefully, we can get through this next surge of COVID and see more and more of these traditional events returning.
Sarah, what do you prefer the initial activity for interest in?
As far as like chorus and band?
Yeah.
Truthfully, I think we have a fantastic staff now that's really working together, K through 12, to create a strong program. I think you can put it all in their lap. They really are excited about what they're doing and encourage the students all along the way.
Probably that on top of coming back to school full-time?
Absolutely.
Be more friends, more opportunities?
Yes.
Time to play pickup a little bit.
Yes, I think, you know, universally, when I talk with students and teachers, they much prefer being in-person than remote.
I've got to agree with Sarah. The end-of-year concerts, I felt like I was not in Highland with the quality of the performance. The conductors, I forget their name, I'm sorry. They're phenomenal. You could tell. They were so passionate, and it just, the students were unbelievable.
I have a question. There's a question for one. We got no L and L.
Just a quick question for you, Sarah. In terms of the new guidance, do we have that on the website anywhere for people to reference? I know it's very, very new, but just something to consider with everything changing so often.
Yeah, we'll get that up there. Yes.
Thank you.
Tom, we can't hear you, Tom.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Board of Education, new business. We have a presentation from Bernard Donigan Group.
Hello, there we go. All right, good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. Jason Schwartz from Bernard Donigan Incorporated. Happy New Year to everybody. My present to you tonight is a 45-page financial report, so probably a little less memorable than Maggie's present, but hopefully, still exciting nonetheless. You know, I say it's 45 pages, but don't be intimidated by that. A lot of it is kind of repeat information, the stuff we've gone through before, so we should be able to, you know, kind of fly through some of it and really just focus on kind of the updates that we have. Just to kind of reset the stage for you from where we left off with our last discussions before we get into the report. So if you recall, the last time I was here, you had your scope sheet from your architect CSR that you had gone through and kind of itemized sort of your initial list of priorities, and that came out to about 12.7 million construction incidental cost. And that scope sheet is attached to the back of the report in the appendix, if you needed to look at as a refresher. And then way back in September, my colleague Chris had been down here to present an initial look for you guys at what size project you could do for no tax impact with the drop in existing debt that you have coming up in a few years here. And that equated to about 15.5 million of construction incidentals that you could do with no additional tax increase. So we talked about it in two scenarios. One, just with that initial 12.7 million scope you had identified. And then one, if you added a few of the other items you had left off to this point to get up to that 15.5. And then in both of those scenarios, we were also going to add a second proposition to account for the turf and the tracks. So basically, we kind of have about four different schedules for you tonight to go through, and that's kind of what that is. So I know it's a little small up here, but you all have a hard copy in front of you as well, so hopefully, you can kind of follow on there. But let me know if you have any questions, and we can try to highlight a little. The main things to focus in on here on this first assumptions page, just to refresh, up here at the top, your building aid ratio. So that's just about 71%. So again, we're getting back, you know, a little bit over 71 cents on the dollar for every eligible dollar we spend in the project. And then the other key thing that we had talked about a little bit last time was bond percentage. So how much of this project do we expect is going to be aidable? So in either scenario, scenario one or two, on the base proposition, oops, sorry. The base proposition, Proposition 1, is going to be right about 93% aidable. And then when we layer on the turf and the track, that second proposition, that brings that down to about 85%. And again, that's because we have those aid ceilings that we're limited to at each building, and when we, with the amount of work we're doing and the site work being counted under the incidentals, we'll go a little bit over that. So nothing new there. It's what we've expected all along, but just an update for you on that. The other key assumption on this page, we are now showing an updated vote date of October of '22. This report should work in either scenario. I know you guys are up in the air between May of '22 or something in like fall, winter of '22. Basically, the information here should hold true in either instance, but we just kind of updated that to show that this could work as well the fall vote. So moving on to the next page, just to give you a quick overview of what we're talking about. So again, in scenario one, which is the identified scope items from the architect's sheet, Proposition 1 would be about 13 million that would go in front of the voters. So that's that 12.7 of construction identified, plus the DAS and CAP-I that we're adding on as kind of financial contingencies. And then if you layer on the turf and track, that's about another 3.2, 3.3 million of costs. So the total referendum would be about 17 million in this first scenario. And again, the second proposition would be contingent on the first proposition passing in either instance. Second scenario, when we look at the, you know, adding the additional cost to kind of maximize our Prop 1 that we can do with no impact, what would go in front of the voters would be just over $16 million. And if we add in the turf and track on top of that, then we're up to about $20 million. That would be the total vote in front of the voters. Any questions on any of those initial assumptions?
Jason, my question would be, if we're going out to fall of 2022 for a vote, and we generate some more fund balance, and we add to that capital reserve, because we won't know until the end of June where we are, that's going to change this entire scenario.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, so again, we were assuming the 1 million.
1.8 million, almost 1.9 million.
Yep.
But we could add to that as far as, if the board decides at the end of June, and we know what our fund balance is, and we're going to project another half a million or whatever it is into the capital reserve, that changes this entire picture.
Certainly, yeah. Timing-wise, it would still work with the drop-off, but when we get to the numbers here as far as any tax impacts, then we'd bring that down.
But it will add to the overall proposal that we're going to put forward. Right now, it's currently maybe, you know, you've got your 16.9 or 17 million. That can go up to 20, 21 million.
It could add to the proposition, yeah. Or you'll see with the, you know, when we get to the numbers here, a few of these scenarios have a tax impact once you layer on the second proposition.
Right.
So instead of increasing the project, it could just also help offset the tax impact. So maybe that second proposition would be tax-neutral as well. So we can certainly look at those numbers, but that's, you know, unless we have an idea of what you might have available.
Yeah, I see.
Yep. Yeah, but any additional cash you have to go in would only make the picture better, either, you know, more scope you could do in the base propositions or offsetting some of the impact of the second proposition.
But I think the critical decision right now to the board would be, are we going to move forward with a May vote, or are we going to move forward with a fall vote? Because that changes the entire scope of the project and the financing of the project. I'm not trying to, you know, steer away from what you're presenting right now, but I think that's a major part of the decision the board has to make in order to kind of finalize the numbers at some point in time.
Yep. Yeah, so we can go through the numbers we have tonight, and then, you know, certainly circle back at the end if there's any, you know, further thoughts on that. All right, so moving forward again, this is a chart I'm sure you're all familiar with at this point. This is your existing debt service. So again, you see on the far-right-hand side there where the blue shaded column is there. Right now, in our current budget, we've got about $1 million of local share built in that annually for our capital side piece of our program. And you see about two years out, that's going to drop to about 690,000. So that's really what we're talking about with this project, is the timing kind of fitting nicely to fill in that drop in existing debt so that we can offset the impact of this and have no marginal tax increase. And again, just visually, that's how you can see it. So the black line going across the page there is our current level built into the budget. So anything below that, we can build in with no additional taxes needed. Anything above that, we would need a new tax levy, increase the color. Timing-wise, this just helps you kind of visualize how the October vote would work. We've seen something similar for the May vote. So essentially, you know, we kind of talked about this, but now you can kind of visually see that basically, we just, you know... know, go out and borrow at the end of that '23, '24 year, right, if we get a CD approval, and that allows us to fill in that drop. So just visually, you can see here that, you know, timing-wise, the fall vote still works without having any issues where that local share would dip down and come back up. Okay, so going through the different scenarios, I'll run through this sheet real quick, just to give you a refresher on how this works, and then the rest of the scenarios, we can kind of, you know, breeze through it. So again, in the upper left-hand corner here, here's where we're bringing in the capital reserve money, and then from there, we pay back the remaining piece, about 11 million in this first option. We pay back the principal on those bonds over, you know, roughly 15 years or so, and that's to align with how the building aid is going to be paid. So then on the far right-hand side, you can see this local share coming in, and that's basically what we're trying to fill in on that bar chart. So when we take this and put it all back together with our existing debt, you see on that far right-hand side, we stay nice and level at the current local share without going above it at all. So here's what that bar chart looks like, and again, we do have, you know, another future drop-off, you know, a few years out, so we're not kind of completely blocked out, we'll have another, you know, opportunity to do some more projects in, you know, five, six, seven years out potentially. So again, this is the just Prop One in Scenario One, so that's the identified items on the scope sheet from CSR. And then before we get to the next scenario, we know we're going to have a tax increase when we add on the turf and the track, as we looked at the numbers. So real quick, before we get to that schedule, anytime we have a tax increase, we have to kind of quantify, you know, what does that mean in terms of what's our assessments going forward, what's our dollar value of that tax impact? So this is just a brief overview of what your current assessments are for the school districts. You can see Town of Lloyd is the primary piece of your school district tax base, about 85%, so that's kind of the biggest one that we're most interested in, and you have the other four towns as well. Looking back at a five-year history, we can see, you know, especially with Town of Lloyd, it's gone up about 1.38% per year on the assessments. Each of the other towns has their historical averages as well. And then going forward, you know, typically what we would do on this page is show the full value going up by those, you know, five-year look backs. In this instance, you'll see on a few pages forward, we're going so minimally over the local share that it was kind of messing with the numbers and making it look like there was no tax impact, even though we were over. So in this case, just conservatively, we've said no increase. So, you know, realistically, the numbers may even turn out better than this, but just to kind of give a, you know, a conservative, fair look at it, we've said, you know, even if the full value doesn't go up at all from where it is today, this is what the tax impact would be. So then we run the maturity schedule again here for Props One and Two, so now we're layering on the turf and the track. And when we put that all back together, you can see now on this far right-hand side, we go up about 55,000 or so above the current level. So not a huge increase, but we do go slightly above those bars when we look at the bar chart here. And if I'm going too fast, feel free to yell at me to slow down, but... So now that we know that we're above the bar there, our next thing is we'd say, okay, well, so we have a slight tax increase, what does that mean to the average homeowner? So we run this page here to come up with it, and you see, you know, we get it on a breakdown per the towns, but really, on the full value, kind of across everybody, it's about four cents per thousand for those years that go above that bar. So just to give you a few illustrative examples, depending on the value of your house, for instance, $125,000 house with a star exemption, be about a $3 tax increase for both Props One and Two if they were to pass in this Scenario One. So it's, you know, technically a tax increase, but certainly nothing too substantial there, about 25 cents a month for the average $125,000 home. So then moving on to Scenario Two, again, the base proposition, this would be filling in that full 15 and a half million of construction incidentals. And again, you can see, as we discussed before, back last September, that does fit within the current levels, we stay right around that $1,042, so we're at that bar below. So again, no tax increase for the base proposition. And then when we layer on the turf and the track in this instance, now you can see that we're up to about 1.2 million per year, so about $160,000 increase or so from where we currently are. So now we're a little bit larger over the bar there when we come up to that, so these sections right here is what we're trying to quantify. So when we take that and spread it across your full value, you can see now we're up to about 12 cents per thousand, so roughly, you know, three to four times the other scenario. So when we take that and spread it across the house values, now you can see that $125,000 house with a star exemption is about $11 a year, you know, so just under a dollar a month tax increase for both Prop One and Two in that second scenario. And the rest of the report is just a few appendix pages showing your history of building aid ratios, and again, just the breakdowns of costs across the different propositions, and your maximum cost allowances. Again, you see the red numbers is where the non-aidable pieces would be in the press box, and the turf and track taking you over your aid ceiling for the high school, so... I know it's a lot of information I went through very quickly there, so I'll take a minute and let you get any thoughts, and let me know if you have any questions.
Jason, a real quick question. This evening, we approved our bond resolution for the BOSI's project of 3.3 million. How does that affect? I mean, that's coming out of our...
Right, that's not factored into this.
Right.
So that, anything for that would be separate.
So that's going to be a tax increase to the taxpayers.
Right, so this is just focusing solely on Highland CSD's capital debt. So again, when we say no tax increase, that doesn't mean you don't have a tax increase for the BOSI's project, for your other O&amp;M budget items, you know, if you have programs or salary that are increasing your budget, those are all over on that side of the budget. This is just for Highland CSD's, Highland CSD-specific capital items.
Again, like we spoke about back in December, if we reduce our overall proposition to 3.3 million, then the whole project becomes, including the BOSI's project, becomes tax neutral to the taxpayer. Am I correctly saying that?
I believe when we looked at the numbers, you actually had to go down a little bit more than just the face value of the BOSI's when you put it all together. I think if we were trying to fit the BOSI's together, we were closer to like an $11 million project versus 16.
So the difference between your Prop One right now, Scenario One I should say, and Scenario Two, we would have to go down a little bit more on your Scenario One in order to make that tax neutral.
Build in that BOSI's project.
Right, if we went down a little bit more and only did Scenario One, then we, Scenario One, Prop One, then you could be tax neutral, because if you're adding on the fields, that was taking you over as well.
Just the tax, yeah.
Right.
I think that was our discussion back in December and November, whatever that...
Mm-hmm.
So voting on the BOSI's project is going to impact the taxpayers unless we built it into this capital project.
Right.
And it would reduce our scope of work, but we'd be building that 3.3 million into that.
Right.
Right. The reason you had to go a little bit further down than just the exact amount of BOSI's, because you'd obviously be paying interest on that as well.
Right.
So that increases the local cost of the BOSI's project.
So these back pages are what's included in that Scenario One and Scenario Two?
Yeah, so if you look at this column right here, that is what is in Scenario One, Prop One. So when I go all the way to the back, the very last page here, you can see that 12.7 million right there, that's the construction incidentals in Scenario One, Prop One. Proposition Two in both instances would be these two items right here, the turf and the track, and then, hopefully I'm not losing you here, but then Scenario Two, Proposition One is kind of undefined, it's this column plus picking another 2.8 million of your choosing from the sheet that hasn't been identified yet.
Okay, so we haven't, okay, we haven't identified that, that was a question.
The only caveat we made from the last meeting was that we did all agree that that would not be site work, because that would all, if it was any site work, specifically the high school, would all be non-aidable. But we had discussed that the only real site work that was to be done on the sheet that was not already in the base proposition was about 5 million of parking lots, so it wouldn't even fit any of the available funding anyway. So it would be any kind of reconstruction done within the buildings would be okay to choose for that 2.8 million.
Okay, thank you.
I think I agree with Alan that the big decision right now is whether you want to go ahead with a vote in May, or if you want to push it off till October, because the conversation, otherwise, you know, we can talk a long time, but if you think you want to do one in May, a lot of decisions have to be made pretty quickly.
Right, again, timing-wise, if you're trying to vote with the May budget vote, you would probably be taking action at your March board meeting to call for the vote, so you'd have to identify, you know, what's the project cost, are you contributing any funds, what's the scope, all that would have to be known by the March board meeting. And I don't know offhand if Tom at CSR should have looked at the secret yet at all, whether that needed any longer timeframe, or if that could just be done at the March meeting, but that'd be the other thing to make sure, if anything needs to be done ahead of time with that.
I think we also, the board, have to decide, have to realize that, you know, that $3 million BOSI is going to be an impact to the taxpayer, so we'd like to know what that's going to be, kind of an estimated increase to the taxpayers to bond out over the course of a year.
Don't we have something from your office with...
Yeah, we had a 20...
There were a few different scenarios, but...
Yeah, we had a 20-year schedule, an assumed 20-year payback, which is what was factored into that other update we had given you, where that 16 million no-impact project went down to about 11 million. That had the BOSI's schedule built into it.
I would be a proponent to wait until October, so we can be more sure of the money that we can throw into this from the capital or to the capital reserves. That would give me much more comfort in making a big decision like this, so I would prefer to wait till October.
I agree with Sue. I think we have nothing to gain by rushing into better than May. We can better analyze our situation by waiting to see how this budget goes forward, find out what the needs of the district are more precisely, we'll have a better idea of costs and expense by the time we get to the spring. And rushing into it, I think it's great that we're doing this, but if we have the time to analyze it further and look to the needs of the district a little more precisely, I think we should do that rather than rush forward.
I agree.
I agree with Ed and Sue. Just I'd rather wait until October and not rush it, and also let the BOSI's situation settle out.
I was just going to ask, so if we wait till October, can, is there still the possibility to pull the BOSI's debt into the project, or is...
Well, the BOSI's is a separate project, but we can, if we want to kind of, you know, marry the financial projections together, we could do that at any time, we could do that now, we can do that with an October vote. The project's already been approved by all the component districts, so it is moving forward at this point, the BOSI's project. You know, as we go along, we'll get, you know, a little bit better information about, you know, rates and all that, but we're really not going to know much different come next October than we know right now, not enough, because if you recall from when Dr. Corey was here, it's like a five-year project.
Right.
So it's going to be still pretty much in its infancy by the time you vote this project, so probably the information we have right now on the BOSI's is about, you know, the best we're going to have by the time we vote. The biggest thing that could change between now and October is additional funding that you might have as a district to throw beyond the 1,895, that might help you potentially, not making any promises, we don't have projections, don't speak our numbers, but that might work to try to have that first scenario, plus the BOSI's, try to get back to a tax neutral if we could.
The only negative expense we're looking at by pushing it off is the actual expense of the vote, which I'm not sure what that places, but it's negative.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we, can we project and see what project could look like as far as numbers, if we project a half a million dollars going into, additional money going into capital reserve, or three-quarters of a million, or a million? Can we project that out and have some numbers that at least the board can look at and now start building a project? Because, you know, I agree, you know, October is probably the time, or December, whatever it may be, we need time to kind of wrap our arms around what we want to try to put forward to the voters, because, I mean, and I'm not taking up your time, because this is a discussion, I guess, for the board, we haven't included a maintenance facility in any of these propositions, Jack. I know surrounding schools, in my business, a lot of surrounding schools are building into some of their projects educational pavilions for outdoor learning. We haven't even approached that at all. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that I think the board has to kind of wrap their arms around, and maybe with the support service kind of steering it in certain directions and given scenarios and different options to look at, but there's so much, I think, that we have to do to kind of put a project out there that's going to be beneficial to our school community. I mean, I, you know, I know Ed, early on, over, you know, six months ago, we talked about, you know, what are we going to present to the community that's an educational piece? We haven't even approached that at all. I mean, most of the items on our list right now are things that came off of the Building Condition Survey, which are identified as Priority One, so we're going to tackle those, but we haven't really looked at anything beyond that. I mean, we spoke about a turf field and a press box for, you know, a Prop Two, but we haven't hit on anything else that's strictly towards the educational piece, and I think we should look at all that.
Well, as we said earlier, I knew the spring vote, May vote, would be, would be a stretch to try to push ourselves into that. The idea of, I think ideally shooting for October, I think, would be the target for us. I don't think we have done well with December votes in the past. I think that's too far down the road, and I think October would be the time to capitalize on all this. Yes, it's going to be, it's going to be tough to get to a doable number, you know, knowing that we do have a BOSI's, not that we have to pay now also, you know, but we've been preparing for that, so we'll see.
No.
Beginning of July, see what extra we possibly can put forward.
Right, understood, but just what you're saying, an October vote means that we have to put it together by September.
August, actually, yes.
At least September, it might be the middle of August, has to be put together to be able to present to the voters in October.
Oh, no.
So it doesn't leave us a lot of time if Victoria comes through and says we have a, we have a half a million dollars in fund balance that we could put towards the capital reserve, now we only got a month and a half to develop a project.
These are, these are...
Back to where we are right now.
I think that all has to start now, huh?
That's a big issue.
We're back to where we are right now.
Yeah.
And that's what I would say, I can't, I said this back in November and December, we can't stall on having a lot of discussion of how we want to...
We're going to, we have to...
Because time keeps up on you, before you know it, you're, you know, you're at the 11th hour trying to make a decision. So I think the ball has to start now if you want to put a capital project out for October or December.
Yes, we do, Al. We do have to do that, because traditionally, things do slow down and/or shut down a little bit over the summer. People go on vacation, we have, it has to be that concerted effort leading up to that point, not, not waiting till... It's got to be a concept, if we have 500,000 or a million, you know, what does that do? What do those numbers generate? And then, like we said, build the project to those numbers and try to build it beforehand.
Build the project before that.
Before that.
Before that.
Leading up, yes. Leading up to that point in time, because again... Yes, leading up to that point in time, because again, people disappear over the summer.
Yeah, I agree with the October timeframe, and that was going to be my point. I challenge all of us to keep this forefront of our mind, to make sure that we are continuing the discussion, so that when we get to this point with that revised timeline, we are much further, further along, so that we are more ready and more prepared for that. And I know you say, you know, summer, people disappear, and that's, can be true, right? Everybody needs time off, but at the same time, I think also some of the other challenges might be a little bit less, especially for some of the administrators, trying to, you know, keep students in the building and new guidelines here and there all the time. So hopefully, we will be able to continue those conversations now, and then really have a focus on it then.
We, we have a budget in, you know, May that we have to get passed, obviously. We should never assume anything, you know.
Okay.
You know, so...
I just wanted to say, I also very much agree that the October vote date would be really beneficial. And I think, you know, this is kind of an unusual year, and I'd say, in addition to being sad to see Maria leave, because she's amazing, she's also having a much better year this year than she did last year. So the school lunch program may not need the same amount of support that it did last year. I know Mr. Miller's staff has been submitting for reimbursement through FEMA for some of the expenses that have been incurred in the past year or two. So there's going to be some additional revenue that we weren't necessarily anticipating, but... And everybody knows that we won't really know all of the, the finer amounts until the end of the year. But I think I would really like to, to plan on having some additional resources to put in the capital reserve, so that we can have a better, a better project for the taxpayers and the district.
So what process should we go through in order to set ourselves up with a calendar, an action calendar? You know, the set they might say by this date, we should have a fully itemized list, you know. I know here we have Proposition 1 and 2, we're talking about the potential, the potentiality of more money, or actually including the BOCs, less money. I think what Alan's getting at, we're just finding ourselves in the same position, because we actually have to take action and, and set firm dates by which we act, to have that list ready, to have, have, actually have the full discussion, to have the list ready. And I'm assuming if we know about the extra money, we would be by July?
Yeah.
So to have our, by July, have everything formulated and ready to present and publish by September.
Is that maybe a calendar that the Support Services Committee can put together, just in terms of timelines, to keep us...
But I think in reality, Victoria, you probably can have a, a good estimate sometime, probably in early June,
We'll have an estimate, yeah.
Of where, where we would be by the end of, you know, fiscal year.
Yep.
That would help for that June meeting, to have some kind of idea of, you know, this is a projection.
I mean, am I, am I clear in understanding that I think when I heard the board say is that we want to have an understanding of how the BOCs project will impact us, and then kind of an estimate of if we have 500,000 additional, or a million additional, what will that gain us? So then we could put together, like the scenarios we have, Proposition 1 that includes this much, Proposition 2 that includes that much, is that...
Yes, I mean, right now, this, this BOC's $3 million is an impact to the taxpayer.
Correct.
As it stands right now.
Yeah.
I think this gives us excellent bones, and from that, when we, as we determine, if we're financing our needs and our finances, we can, we can build from this. But that, that we have to set from dates that are around.
For the BOCs, Ed, if we did not move forward with any capital project on our own, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have an impact.
Correct.
Right, so, yeah, so it's only if we, when we move forward.
If you try to keep it, everything has to be, we have to build it into...
Right. Yep.
Right, you might, you might have like a one or two-year, because the, the BOC's project starts, your first payment's through in July of '22, so scoot back here real quick. You'd have one year that you'd have to figure out, where you, you know, if you layered the BOCs on top of this, there would be an impact in '22, '23, unless we offset it.
Fair point.
But then after that, the remainder of the BOCs, you know, if you bonded it for 20 years, the next, you know, 19 years of it would all fall within that drop-off if you didn't do anything else yourself.
Yep, fair point, yep.
Any more discussion? Any more, any more comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll be in touch.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we're setting ourselves up for success, what are the next steps? Like what next discussion should we be making sure we're having at a certain time? Because I know this was a great discussion, I appreciate Jason's comment, I think it was very good information. It gives us and arms us with a lot more that we can look at, consider. But I just want to be sure that we have our next kind of step.
Are, are we starting at two a month now? Are we, are we having...
It's not to March.
All right, why don't we...
So February is...
Why don't we start having two meetings a month now? That's going to give us at least two additional we weren't planning on. So that's a step, that's a step moving forward.
February 8th, we have two in March.
Yep, we have two in March.
So, so...
We have one in February, we have two in March.
But I think unless we have some, I mean, we can say, we can talk, but I think we need, like, what are next?
Those are the four, all March.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, we can certainly add another meeting if there's, you know, we're saying, okay, we want to have this discussion by this date, we don't have board meeting before then, let's add another one for that month. I'm all for that, but I think we just need to have a clear direction for all of us.
The, yeah, these discussions can occur, you know, they can be a clock, I don't know if they have to be formal discussions, they could be, as long as they're, the findings of the, of the discussions are presented publicly. I don't think there's anything to make evidence from having, you know, to talk about what the needs are, or how we may address them, or...
The discussion's the discussion, it's just finding the time and planning that out, and how we want to, how we want to meet for that.
I guess as I was saying, I don't want to be physically all, you know, given constraints of the winter, as well as all the variety of needs upon us. And that's just, we can set up times that aren't necessarily formal gatherings, you know, the physical gatherings.
The, the one-meeting-a-month scenario was, has just come about in the last few years. We were pretty solid, two meetings a month since before I came on the board, you came on the board.
Right.
And then we, the last couple of years, we've, you know, we've started to cut back a little bit.
No, we used to do one meeting a month in December, because it was a, a shorter month. Coming back in, in January after the holiday break, we did one. And then we started two for budget cycle, and then summer months, it would be one. But we've always thrown in extra meetings when we needed to.
Well, I think we have to start throwing in extra meetings.
I think going back to Ed's point and, and Heather, and this is my feeling, I think we have pros and cons on the board right now. Are, do we want to move forward with a turf field and a press box? Do we want to move forward with a maintenance building? I think that those are the discussions that we have to, those are the big-ticket items. I think that's where we have to kind of come to a consensus that, you know, is this how we're going to move forward and build everything? You know, we know what the building, the, the Building Condition Survey said, those are priority one. We know what those items are, they've already been identified. Everybody's had a copy of them since probably October. Now, let's see where the entire board sits on some of those large-ticket items. The turf field, the press box, the, the maintenance facility, outdoor pavilions for an educational piece, and, and so forth. I think that's where we've got to start, you know, timelining and having conversations.
I feel like we've had, going back to what Heather said, I feel like we're still in the same spot. So we know we have the extra time, but we still haven't said, what happens next? And we've, I feel like the past two months, we've been going back and forth. I think we've agreed on a lot of the items, so I just think, next, you know, next we have another meeting, what are we going to talk about is what Heather is, is asking. And I agree, like, we need to say, like, we're going to do this next meeting, let's say that now, except like we're, except we're going, it's like we have this example over and over again, groundhog day with these meetings, so, I mean, so just, and we have, you know, time is, we have the time going to October, but I feel like we're going to be in the same spot. If we don't say next meeting, we scheduled an extra meeting, where are we going to accomplish at that meeting? Because I think we have to be strategic about the time that we're going to be adding.
So I would suggest that if we're going to put an extra meeting in, that the, that it be a, basically a one-agenda item meeting, and the agenda would be discussion of, you know, making some decisions about those big topics that everyone keeps going round and round. And, you know, I think we kind of sort of know where people's kind of sort of stand on them, but we haven't actually called it to, okay, you know, plant your foot one way or the other, right? And so, you know, maybe we put, maybe we decide on a day, and it's just, that's just the agenda item. Because, you know, what happens is, we have our whole meeting, and then you get towards the end, and, you know, everyone's just starting to, it's the end of the day. And, and, you know, at some point, we are going to have to have some, maybe even tense conversations, right? About what this is, and so to concentrate them at one meeting might be a good way to make some decisions, so you can move forward. So then, you know, then, especially if we get some of those, those topics that we keep going round and round about out of the way and decide yes or no, then maybe, Alan, we can also have some of the other discussion too, about an outdoor classroom area, or 21st century classroom kinds of things, without wondering if we're going to do a turf field, or wondering if we're going to do a maintenance facility, or, you know, I, I don't know. That, that would be my suggestion, but certainly before...
Excellent suggestion. I, I would like to devote a full meeting to the discussion, that's...
Yeah, I agree, I think that's a good discussion, and maybe for, you know, the first one that we have for discussion solely on that, we can discuss, you know, those large-ticket items, and come to conclusion on that, and really run that to ground, to get everybody's opinion on it. Also, what I would ask administration for, for that meeting, would be any, kind of like you're talking about, Alan, the educational, like a pavilion, what are some educational things or ideas where we would spend money that would be suggested from administration? So, nothing like formal in terms of, but just some ideas, because, yeah, educational pavilion, when I hear it, it sounds like a fantastic idea. But making sure that we have, you know, all the ideas that are out there. You guys are the educators, I would love to hear, you know, some ideas from you guys as well.
And, and the real, the reality might set in that we might not have a tax-neutral proposition. It might be where, you know, it's going to, it's going to fall on the taxpayers for a portion of it. It, you know, if we, we sell it the proper way, like adding those educational pieces in there, I mean, at least we have something to say to the taxpayers, you know, this is for the benefit of the children. If we're strictly just doing upgrades to infrastructure, like our Building Condition Survey you're telling us to do right now, we have to do, I mean, that, to me, is, that, you know, no impact, because that's part of that, you know, that upkeep of maintenance. But to continue on and expand the project, to pick up some of the educational needs, or some of the other, quote, wish list, I guess, it might be an impact to the taxpayers. So we have to come to grips with that as an entire board. Do we want something tax-neutral, or do we want something that might impact the taxpayers? Like Jason proposed here, is it slight impact to the taxpayers going to Proposition 2?
Absolutely.
So we have to come to grips with that as an entire board. I know, I think Sue, you would probably be, you know, somewhat not in favor of that totally, because you've already, you know, announced that along the way, that you don't want to see an impact to the taxpayer. And I understand that. So we've got to try to come up with, you know, maybe that capital reserve can get increased a little bit to continue a tax-neutral project for the taxpayers.
And I think that's where it's important to look at the bigger, like you said, you know, you look at your bigger items, and then you build the project around that. So let's look at the bigger items, and then let's also at least throw into our heads, right, some of those educational ones that can be beneficial for our students, right? And then we can figure out kind of, in terms of prioritization, what that means, right? So for a tax-neutral, kind of, this is where we have to draw the line. Without tax-neutral, here's what we can do.
Per our previous conversations as a board and Support Services Committee, we gave the Donaghy Group a charge to look and see how certain big parts, what, what that would mean, what that scenario would be. And we had kind of agreed that these are things we were looking for, it's from what we perceived to be public, uh, public want, you know, the want of the taxpayers. Those, those are the noisy people we were hearing, you know, about a turf field scenario. And I don't mean noisy in a negative way, I mean, these are the people that we were listening to.
The noisy that we asked for, right?
What?
The noise that we asked for, right?
Yeah, that's, we asked for that input, and we did, we each brought back some of those same statements. That's why we asked them to build, build that, these scenarios. Now we're saying, well, hold on, let's, we, we've got to figure it out pretty quick, so, you know, if we want to try to add these other add items or takeaway. But we were heading in that direction already by asking them to cost out these other, these main turf field and stuff like that.
Absolutely, and I think we're in a good position because we have that information, right? So you can prioritize and have kind of where you're, you're going to land.
We've got to get over the hump pretty quick here, you know, or we are going to be spinning our wheels if we don't make these decisions and, and really have a target.
So your suggestion, Tom, about putting a second meeting in February? Let's put the second meeting in and make that the all-out hashout to...
Do we have a second meeting in this month, or would that be too premature?
No, February, February is the best one.
You sure?
February.
Nobody thinks we should meet again this month?
February.
I could do February, I wouldn't be able to do that.
We can't do February.
Oh, you can't do February?
Not, not a second one, no. I'll do that.
Well, again, we realize we're all not going to be here.
Yeah, I, I think the Support Service kind of already done their, their, their job, if you want to say that. We presented, you know, the cost breakdown, we had CSR to do all that. Now it's got to be the entire board.
Does, does, does the rest of the board think that we don't need a second meeting in January? Does it, who, who wants to...
I definitely want, if Heather can't make January, I would want to push it to February.
What about, so there's...
Well, that's one person.
Yeah, but...
I, I mean, let's just, through the numbers now.
I also think January either.
I can't make a second one in January either.
So the first meeting in, or the meeting in February right now is February 8th? Yes. Which is the second Tuesday. February 1st is also a Tuesday, but for February, February 1st? Or rather than maybe the end of the month of February, would it, would we be able to do earlier?
On that.
Like we're going to be without Jerome, you're right.
No, I'll be here, I'll be here February 1st.
Are you going to be here? Oh, then let's do that.
Okay.
You'll be on my work, I, I just, you know, we don't know about mine.
We don't know about mine either.
I should be at this point?
February 1st, correct? That does give us a little more time to look and think.
Yes.
So at...
At least a lunar meeting or something.
Yes, we can, so, 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 so. So at the February 1st meeting, because we're all clear about exactly what's happening, is it would be just one agenda item.
Yes.
We're not going to throw other random things into that meeting, right? We're all agreed on that. And it, and it'd just be discussion of the proposed building project in October. And then, is there anything else you need financially for that? Is, like, what, what do you want us to bring to that meeting that could help you make some of these decisions beyond what we've already received? I mean, this poor guy, every time, he's like, okay, now we're going to do this. That's fine, we appreciate that.
No, I think this is, I think this is really a board discussion that needs to happen.
I would just reiterate what Heather said, do you have any feedback from the educational side? Including teachers, administrators?
That would be very, yes.
I would love that, and I'd also love to see what the financial impact would be. I mean, I, I'm obviously, some of these are better supported by the state government, the federal government in terms of reimbursement. So I'm assuming educationally, educational improvements would be better financed than, I, we were told, that specific groundwork would be, or, or site work in people regions like the high school. We wouldn't be getting that much money if we were to do it.
Yeah, we have to keep in mind what Jason presented as part of the ratio, you know, what, you know, what we could do as far as site work versus, you know, educational piece.
I think that conversation would also be good in thinking about, I think maybe it was Mr. Akatsias at some point, that said, you know, what can we do in the general fund versus what can we do in a building project? And so having a...
And so having a conversation as a board can also prioritize some of that. So, you know, what really needs to go into a building project, but then also what, what can we look at the next year, two years, five years down the road that we may be able to work into, um, what we're doing in the buildings, you know, on a regular basis? I, I just think some extended planning and looking at where we want Highland to be in 10 years, you know, can be helpful.
But if you do in-house yearly projects, you don't get that full state aid on it. Do you have the building aid?
Right. If we're just doing them out of the general fund, we don't get aid on them.
Right.
Right, but I'm just saying, there might be some things that come up in that conversation. Small things that don't need to wait until a project that we really could do in-house. You know, that would just help us have discussions about budget sometimes that, um, we don't always bring in because we think we need to wait for a project or we need, you know.
But, no, I, I understand what you're saying, but historically, you know, district, district wide, uh, you do those things because you know a proposition or a capital project is gonna bring you 72% or 75% building aid on it. And that's why most districts wait to do their large ticket items, you know, through a capital project.
If we do have any new items, we may not have pricing on it either though. So if there's anything additional that we haven't talked about, we're not gonna have an exact price like we have.
Yeah, well, that's fine. I think, I just wanna make sure we're considering the piece, but fair point. Yep.
My other question, and I apologize that maybe I don't remember from before. But the, what would be the impact of the Bosse's project? Like what, what are we talking about? If the taxpayers are going to have to pay for the Bosse's project, what are they going to be paying? Do we know? Did we get that already?
I don't recall a payment. We get that information, do you?
Okay, I'm sure I have it, but I just didn't know if anyone else remembered if we got it already.
They had a local share. I'm trying, I can't recall.
I don't, I don't think we put it.
Like a house page like we did in this report so we can, you know, work that out.
We didn't do it in December.
Right.
I mean, because I'm thinking it's probably not going to be substantially more than what was in here really. Right? I mean, it's not gonna be huge for here.
Less than, well, yeah, it would be significantly less than what's in here.
Right.
Your project too.
Right.
If your project already has a little bit like sort of scenario, two props, one and two, you're to have a tax impact and then you're already Bosse's on it.
Right, no, I, I get that. It's just more so if we would just have an idea of, okay, if we keep our project tax neutral, what would be the impact of then having the taxpayers pay for the Bosse's project?
Heather, did you have the Bosse's one right there or from before?
I had $14, um, going back to the November 9th meeting. $14 per, uh, $100,000 of assessed value. That's what I wrote down.
This, December, I think we just get it, that gave you kind of a general update on your project. It would have been November, I think we were at for the Bosse's. Did it act October, November meeting?
I actually think you emailed it to me at one point.
The only other thing I would suggest for the meeting on February 1st is just to make sure we think through. And Mr. President, maybe you can guide us just to have a goal by the end of the meeting, right? To say, this is what we want to accomplish by the end of the meeting so that we're all driven toward one, one point and one discussion.
February 1st, yeah. We were given a, um, a project list that was, listed the priorities, um, in A through the letter D. Is there a way I can correlate this with the, um, description of the scope report that you've attached?
Uh, I'm not sure what that other document is.
Sue, I think all, I think that was based on the building condition survey and all those As were then included on... Yeah. Was included right.
So Proposition One is all the As.
Yeah.
So I should find the...
You should be able to map it.
Proposition Two with all the As plus the turf field and the press box.
Uh, the, the press box is in the base one, I believe, between turf and track.
Turf and track, yeah.
Turf and track.
So all the As is Proposition One.
I haven't looked at it specifically for that, but that's what I remember.
Moving forward, we're looking at a meeting February 1st. At the end of that meeting, we should have a...
Totally devoted to the capital project?
Yes.
Yeah. Or October?
Yes.
October, December?
What?
October or December? October.
October.
What, majority? October, right? Figure it out. We're gonna meet February 1st and come out of that meeting with a defined list and, and direction.
About that.
Let's try for that. Um, because again, we already had some of those same meetings that put us in a position where we had them price out these scenarios. So hopefully we can, you know, all agree again on what direction we wanna go in.
I think there's too many things to discuss. Are we intend on remaining tax neutral absolutely or not? And given that, if we are not going to remain tax neutral, how do we stand as a board on issue of the turf and the track and the press box? What is the trade-off there? Will we develop items? And I think we should come to an agreement at that meeting that sets the stage for how we proceed in the next month.
Absolutely. Because right now, we are not tax neutral going over all our priority ones. So that's completely incorrect by saying, you know, we come to a consensus. We won't know if we can go over the current cap unless we know what we're gonna put into the capital reserve until July. So whatever we discussed in February is gotta be basically what Ed said. We gotta decide on it at a board if we're gonna stay, if we wanna stay tax, uh, tax neutral throughout the entire project coming all late to October. Or are we comfortable going over slightly and having an impact to the taxpayer? Otherwise, we're spinning our wheels again.
No, yes, yes, we will revisit it and look at it that way. Again, that was part of our idea initially with this, with this report was, where do we stand with that? Yes, it did. So we know what's good now. All right. So we're good, February 1st.
Can I just, I did just find the, the email where Jason's office had let us know that the tax impact for the Bosse's project would be $13.91 a year per $100,000 of assessed value.
$45 a tree.
One, just final clarification before I go home and do my homework. Scenario one, prop one. That will have, that, that includes all of the A items.
That includes all the items in that column in the scope sheet in the back. I'm not sure how that, I don't know what that sheet is, that A and C, that's not far off. So I, I can promise that that covers all the A items and covers what's in that scope sheet independence.
So if we add the Bosse's, the $3 million to that, that could be tax neutral, potentially, or maybe going over a little.
It'd be close, yeah.
It would be close, but depending maybe if there's extra money at the end of the year.
Again, that's just the prop one in scenario one if you had prop one.
Right. Scenario one, prop one. That's the closest to tax neutral. Maybe a little going over coupled with the Bosse's.
Right.
It'd have to go down a little bit, right?
It'd be close. You'd have to go down a little bit. The, the building ratio was up slightly from when we originally ran that report. So there's a, it'd be either a very minor tax impact that with a little bit of a catch.
But it would be negligible.
It's as close to tax neutral as we'll get with everything proposed.
It's the only one of the four scenarios that would be close to tax neutral. And the other three with the Bosse's on top would certainly have an impact.
Okay, thank you. Yep. And as Sarah said, it might get tense.
You wanna start at six? February 1st.
Heather, is that okay?
Everybody will be fresher. Yeah.
They said 6:15.
Yeah, yeah, six, yeah, 6:15 for us. Yeah, for, for Ed.
I think it's for six, but it is 6:15.
We done with that discussion? Moving on. Under new business, um, we have, I'm looking at items two, three, four, and five. Has everybody looked at those items? Do we, does anybody have any questions on those items? And if we don't, or if we can answer all of that, uh, questions, are we comfortable voting on it two, three, four, and five?
And it's, I guess, actually, it's okay. What's on that, but you can talk about it.
All right. Um, I'm gonna read each one of them. We'll, we'll do them outside. All right. Go with that?
Looking at the block?
Or you wanna do it as a, as a consent? As a block? Okay, uh, I have a motion to, um, take item two, three, four, and five as a block. Heather and Camille. Do we have any more discussion on, or any new discussion on items two, three, four, and five? So, uh, all favor? Anybody oppose? Six, zero for block, uh, two, three, four, and five, items on the new business? Thank you. Ulster County School Board Association meeting, uh, meeting is being held via Zoom on January 27th. There's a memo attached regarding that. I'm sure that's probably about attendance and meeting.
I, I would encourage anyone, if you can zoom in, uh, this is usually a pretty good meeting because this is where the, all the politicians show up. So it's pretty lively.
The link will be sent to you later, later on.
I'm excited.
Thank you, Lisa.
School Resource Officer discussion. Yeah, I think I brought it up at the last meeting and I, I believe I asked Joel and Tom to put, put it on the agenda for discussion. I think we have continued discussion on the School Resource Officer and the benefits it could have for our district. Reading Joel's, uh, update and the information that came from the Town of Lloyd Police Department, I believe, uh, they're willing to support right now, I'm gonna call it a temporary SRO at no cost to the district. I think they still gotta put together schedules for days, times, and all that. But, uh, that would be a start and then see where it goes as far as building into our budget for the 22, 23 school year.
So, can I, I was just gonna, I was, I met with, um, Chief Janso as well as Lieutenant Rollison when, when Joel was there. So I, I just thought, thought I could give you just a little bit of background about the meeting that we had with him. Just to kind of back up what was in what Chief Janso sent. You know, not surprisingly, they're very eager to, um, participate with the district in this. They, it, from what Chief Janso outlined when we were sitting, they would be able to cover the cost of a part-time SRO for their, their fiscal, their calendar year, January through December. Um, and then we would need to, if we decided we wanted either full-time or, um, to pick, you know, move forward with it beyond December, we would need to start in January. So for the impact for 20, our 22, 23 budget, it would only be in the 23 part of it from January to, to June. Uh, but we did have a very good conversation about kind of what the parameters would be. You know, where the, we had initial conversations about kind of what the line is for an SRO versus, um, you know, our security officers. You know, they were very clear that their, um, focus of this would be support and building community. That it's not about being punitive or, um, you know, maybe some of the pictures that we see in the news sometimes. They would be responsible for the training. I definitely, you know, my biggest concern is that I think the district needs to have a lot of say in who the person is that they're going to send to us. I, I think that was, um, I think that that's very important for us as a district. You know, if, if we're going to have another person in the buildings, um, we wanna make sure that they're going to work in a, a support role. So we, we talked about that quite a bit with both of them. Um, they were supportive of that as well. It, you know, it was a good conversation, but it was definitely an opening conversation. We didn't promise them anything one way or another. We didn't say that this was definitely going to happen.
But is it possible for the chief to leave the board?
Absolutely, and they offered to. But we didn't, we wanted to have a conversation here before we had them come.
Yeah, I think just without giving, you know, naming names to people, I think that there was, even in our original discussion, I think there's, there's, there were feelings on both sides. I think there's a tendency for the very reasons that you're speaking of. Personality says, is it going to function in a punitive fashion or is it going to be a, you know, a bridge to, for understanding between communities? Which is wonderful if that can be possible. But I think the best way to facilitate that, as he said tonight, is the board, the chief of, and actually direct them.
Yes, they actually offered to be here tonight, but we thought that the board maybe needed to have a more initial discussion before we had them come.
I'll, I'll jump in. Does I, I do have some, some concerns or some questions as well? Cause I'd like to know more about the role. You know, just based on, um, the numbers you gave us, you shared with us, Sarah? Just kind of the need seems more of the substance abuse in the, in the district versus physical violence. So I just, for me, if we're gonna have an SRO, trying to understand what the need is and what the benefits are, I would love to get some, you know, mental health experts in the building, get some drug prevention. Those types of services to me are more needed, um, given, like I said, what I've, what I've heard about the district, um, you know, and the data that I've seen. So I just, you know, I'm very, I think we should be very cautious about adding an SRO. I know there's been an uptick in school shootings. Like that's, that's the reality and I know it's scary. But having an SRO does not mean that someone is not gonna bring a weapon into the building. So I just think that, uh, we need to consider other ways to be more proactive. Whether it's, um, random, you know, bag searches, laundering, things, those are things that are deterrents. And I think that's what SRO does, but I would like to know day to day, like, was there actual in the building? But I would like to know, day-to-day, like, was there actual in the building? Because I just don't see it being what we need right now as a district. And there's other questions that I have, but I'll let some other people jump in.
I agree with Camille. I was here ten years ago when we voted on an SRO, and I was the only one on the board to vote no. I think having an armed personnel in our buildings, I don't think it's a good fit for Highland. We had disastrous results that put us in the national news ten years ago. I, I feel that the administration here is doing an absolutely excellent job in focusing our district on, on good values. And I also agree with Camille on, we should focus more on mental health needs. So I, I would not be in favor of this.
I, I don't think we can use one incident to deter the use of SROs. I can go back to my early years on the board, and we had an SRO back then who served the district well. I think everyone in the district, and those that are still here that were present back then, can attest to the value of the SRO interacting with students. That was when we didn't have security at our doors. Our SRO then circled all three campuses, interacted with students. At the elementary school level, they, they participated in, in reading assignments with them. They did all that. And Sarah's right, it depends on the individual, how they would interact with, with the students. But I can attest to those early years when it was grant-funded, and we had an SRO for probably seven, eight years, maybe it was. And it was of value to the district. I mean, they, they were able to assist in many areas, including, you know, social work areas, assist with our behavioral intervention specialists we had back then. They worked hand-in-hand with those individuals. And then the presence of a, of an officer in a school building and have children be able to respect that individual from an early age is valuable. I mean, I think we lost that along the way, where, you know, some, some areas of, of that respect has been lost. And I think we gotta try to regain that again. And I think this opportunity had no cost right now to the district. And then weigh it out and see what happens, you know, come December thirty-first of, of this year, if we're gonna continue it on for, you know, the, the year of twenty-three. But I, I think it can be an individual that would service our district well and work well with our current staff.
I'm, I'm in favor of giving it a trial or looking at it, meeting with Chief Janso and Lieutenant Rollison. And obviously, you said we would like a part in selecting the individual, screening, whatever you want to say. Fact's a fact, we do have police officers that are present in our buildings. They do walkthroughs, correct? I believe all three buildings?
Yes.
So they don't leave their gun in the car, right? Again, that, that, I, I was here on the board too when that other unfortunate situation happened. And, you know, there's still remnants of it in the hallway down here, you know, from, from where that happened. So that's a reminder every time I go down that hallway. It was a poor choice. Individual admittedly made poor choices that day. So I, I can't use that as the reason for not trying to look into this scenario.
I think Sarah's words are, oh, I'm sorry. I think Sarah's words are probably the most poignant in this situation, because I can see the validity on both sides of the issue. I think the personality of the individual is tantamount, is sort of key. And the ability of that person to work in conjunction with all of the aspects of Highland would also be key. I can understand why it would be perceived as a threat, and I can understand why it's the exact opposite of that. I remember back when we had the DARE officers in the building, and it wasn't just a matter of the, the children learning to respect the officer. It was quite, quite a two-way street. The officer learned the children personally, not only in the building, but out in the community. And that sort of had a filtering-out effect. So it was no longer an adversarial relationship. Even if these children grew older, they knew that these were people they could turn to for help, for support, for guidance that they needed. There was a very definite relationship that was built, a very positive one. If we could foster that, I'd be in full support of that. If, however, this is just becoming a monitoring situation, as you say, a, one that's meant to be punitive, then I, I could obviously, especially given the presentations we were given only two years ago and the concerns, you know, to, I think there are definitely fragile aspects of our current community that would perceive it as a threat. So I think we have to be very delicate about if we move forward choosing the personality, having an influence on what kind of a personality and mentality, which is why I very much would like to meet with the chief.
I need to clarify, it's no, nothing negative about our local police. They're excellent, community servants, excellent. It's just I don't feel a constant presence is needed in our schools.
And I just wanna, and I, I have a lot of experience working with SROs. Just, just wanna say that. And I, this, I support law enforcement, you know, as well. But I just wanna make sure that we're not jumping into something. And I feel like it's, like I said, it's a crazy, you know, crazy, you know, start of the school year with the things that have been happening. And I felt like this conversation took place after what took place with the last, the last major school shootings. I thought that that's what prompted it. But I would like more detail before I agree to anything. The examples you gave about value, you talked about behavior intervention and social workers, but that's not a job of a police officer. So I feel like there are people that, if that's what we're looking for, we need to get those experts. So for me, I'd like to hear more of the benefits that don't require behavior and, you know, social work. I, I talked in my email about drug education. I talked about career, you know, talking about law enforcement careers. Those types of things, to me, are, are value, mentorship. But the examples you gave for me are not really what I'm looking for in an SRO.
Just to speak up, I know, you know, I am absolutely in favor of an SRO. I'm also in favor of stuff that, you know, other items that Camille is speaking about as well. I think they're really two separate, right? I think that, you know, some of the, you know, bag searches, as you talked about, some of the other drug education, that type of stuff is absolutely necessary. But I was part of the district when we had the SRO. I grew up with the SRO in our district, and I can say it was an extremely positive experience for myself as well as the students in my class. I remember the DARE program growing up. It was widely talked about. I think that education from a very early age, from somebody in the community, if we can, you know, foster those relationships within our community, I think it's only to benefit us. I think, you know, just looking at kind of what was proposed, yeah, I would, I, I agree with Sarah wholeheartedly that the personality can make or break this, right? So I think that's a huge part of it, making sure that, you know, we have insight into that, right? And make sure, you know, somebody else can mention it, it's not just a monitoring activity, but to make sure we're able to foster those relationships, I think, is, is really important. So I'm absolutely in favor of it.
We, we aren't ignoring some of those other social ills. We are supporting our students. We've, we have added new positions. And I'm looking, you know, for, for a balance here. Let's, I think it's worth giving it a try, if it's, if it's done right.
Yeah, and I think in this situation, I mean, with what's been outlined, and certainly I would want to have more discussions first and ask more questions as well. But what's been outlined, you know, we would have the opportunity to, to, to give it a trial run, to, to see what it's like and at December thirty-first, or, you know, before that. But effective December thirty-first, make that decision to figure out if it's beneficial for our district and, and our students, or, or if it's something that we should maybe consider something else.
And we, we as a district are taking on more of the responsibility to support these scenarios, you know, due to other, you know, the government dropping their support for some of these issues, like, you know, mental health and drug abuse. It's more, more of it's fallen on the school district. So, and we're, we're doing the best we can to pick up the slack, but we have other areas where we think it's necessary to pick up that slack and potentially, I'm not saying to give them, potentially add that position. Okay? Thank you.
One thing we could do before the next meeting is, part of the state guidance for having an SRO is that you do need to have a very clear MLA. So we could research some examples of MOAs that other districts have used, so that, you know, we'd have a better idea of what language might be in there. My understanding is these MOAs would clearly delineate kind of what, when, when an SRO acts or doesn't, and in, you know, what situations you want them to be a part of versus not. And we did have, again, initial conversations. And for me, I was a teacher here when we had the SRO program way back, and, and it was very beneficial. I, I think that students did get a lot out of it. I think it was beneficial not only to our school community, but also to the Highland community overall. But I, I have reservations about it as well, because I was here for both of the SRO experiences and, you know, had different experiences in both times. But I, I, I really would like to emphasize that it is a more of an educative role. So it's an SRO that's going into classrooms and talking about life choices, talks about the impacts of, of choices that we make sometimes. You know, I, I think that there can be that part of the role overall, but we just need to, we need to spell it out. You know, I, I think we want to be very clear about how we do it. And, you know, I think we're very fortunate in Highland that the three security people that we have are a core part of the, of this building and a core part of our support network for our students. I mean, they really do fill a role that's not a, a social worker or not, you know, isn't, isn't a professional in that way, but is a resource for students and is a connection that a lot of our students make. So, you know, we're very fortunate in that part. So I, I also wouldn't want to infringe on that role that we've established either by bringing in some, a law enforcement officer. So, I mean, I, truthfully, I'm kind of wishy-washy on this one. And, and in lots of ways, you know, I see benefits on both sides. Or I, I see benefits and I see drawbacks. But we could at least look at some of the MOA language, so we know what we're talking about with that. We can bring that to the next one. And certainly, I know Chief Janso would like to meet with the board as well. So we could look at maybe doing that for the, the February eighth Board of Education meeting.
Yeah, I just, I think that would be helpful. Because I, I work with some fabulous SROs, just to shout them out, shout them out. But, and then I have, you know, the police department where I work at, we have good relationships, but it's communication that, that happens, that's ongoing, there's community events. A lot of those supports are there. So I just wanna make sure that if it's this direction that we go, that we know what we're jumping into. Because it's, as I said in my email, if, if things are addressed, you know, let's go back to mental health, you know, that's not, not, you know, things could go the other way for us and create a lot of problems. And these are kids that come into the building. So I just think, for me, if we can have that conversation and I could have, you know, questions answered, and we can have some better guidelines, that would be very helpful, to make sure that this, you know, it goes the way that we wanna see it.
I would imagine so. I don't have a good answer for you on that. You know, my guess is you probably start with a template of some sort, probably looking at other, other districts and how they've done it. But then there should be freedom within that, you know, to, you know, we want to definitely have clear communication. And, and one of the things that I brought up was, wait, if this is your employee, what does that mean for us? Like, you know, where, where is our authority versus their authority? You know, and he also mentioned that, you know, this would be a part-time person, and if something happened in, in Highland that they needed bodies for, you know, that person would be going to that, whatever that event would be, especially since Highland doesn't have a huge force, right? But, you know, I, I, that's where the MOA comes in, in, you know, where, where is our authority over this person? And I think the MOA, again, would also really delineate how much, you know, the mutuality of it, right? The, you know, how much say do we get and who would they send, and, and how much do they have? You know, I don't particularly want the extra guy or girl around, right? We wanna make sure that it's someone that can interact with students.
The, I thought we had an MOA, but that was, that talked about the part-time and, what was that document that we had in our email? I think it was.
The, what Joel sent?
Yeah, maybe it was an email, in our email, or it was, it was a, it was a MOA that talked about the hours and just availability, or just, it was that, but nothing more other than.
It was just, this was just kind of an outline from him about what it could, you know, what, what they have right now and what they would like, but it, unless, it must have been a different one that I saw, I don't know.
The thing that Sarah's talking about is from a, a state memo that came out in October two thousand nineteen. And it's a memorandum of understanding between the district and the officer, and it totally outlines what the expectations are. So what, the email that we got there was just kind of what the Town of Lloyd was offering to us about availability. But this document that we would create, you know, with them, would really outline what we would look for in the position. Because this, this is our district, so, you know, we need to control or, you know, look at what we want from, if we're adding a position.
Every MOA is a unique document, you know, drafted by, you know, or, you know. So at that point, you know, we'll have input.
So we'll, we'll talk to, to Janso.
Yeah, we're talking, a presence in all three buildings as a part-time. So not like kids are gonna be innovating in our school all day long. The goodwill and acquisition will be spread across.
How often do they, how often do they come now? Do they come daily?
I would say we probably have someone here daily, because we get visits from Town of Lloyd, Sheriff's Office, State Police.
Yeah, they're, they're here at least three, four times a week. Time school, middle school is welcome.
So we do have visits already?
Absolutely.
Which is more of a function, you know, but, you know, potentially the same individual. And maybe they might even have two people trained, or one consult, somebody goes outside, you know. I've seen it in other schools, and it's, it's worked well. It's a thought, you know, it might happen. Nice to see, we give it a try, a try on. See if we, where we wanna go. Okay, are we done? SRO, we're gonna move forward, look at some existing previous MOAs. By Chief Janso and Lieutenant Rollison. Thank you. Oldham Chapel Project updates. We did that, didn't we? Want to start again? Want to start again? What? We good? We don't need to discuss? I don't think we need to discuss Capitol Project, man. We're done, we're done. Ms. Laney, is any correspondence?
I, I just want to echo Sue's comments a while ago that we need microphones for our meeting. It's kind of, kind of sad to see our board president and our superintendent chair in a mic during the course of a meeting. Because I think, you know, we, we stream, we stream the meetings, and if you go on the next morning and listen to our meeting, you can't hear anybody up here speaking unless you're talking into the mic. So, and I'm, I feel bad for our audience in the back that really can't hear that well, because we don't speak into the mic. I just think at this point in time, if we're gonna have our meetings here in the cafeteria where we have to utilize. where we have to utilize microphones, we need a mic for every individual. I think that's an investment well worth for, for our board meetings.
Al, I?
I agree, I agree.
I talked, I already had a conversation with Joel and I know he was going to, Carol, are you still here?
I'm here.
I think, yeah, Joel was going to speak to you also about a better microphone system. Obviously, I believe wireless. Sue, you have had a good experience with Bose?
Oh, it's phenomenal at Bose's.
Just, I have?
You don't have to speak into the mic.
I have spoken?
Yes, yes.
All of that stuff? I have, I have been in contact twice with the sound person that comes and does all of our systems and all of those systems are on backorder. So I do have quotes. He's going to come in, he's going to look at the areas, but he'll see what's, what works in E32 and what will work here. But there's nothing available right now. So, I mean, I have been working on it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the message was, you know, was there that we are trying to address the issue?
Do we, do we have any more of these mics so everyone can have one in front of that?
I was watching it, kind of double clutching it.
The issue is the equipment that we used to have is, is not working. It's, so it was so old, so we never replaced it. Because we fixed the auditorium, we didn't know we were ever coming back in here. So right now, we don't have the necessary microphones for the cafeteria, but we'll try to resolve it for the next meeting. We'll find something.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll donate my, what mic to the president.
That's quite all right, Al. Okay. We good? Any public comments?
She's in the back there.
Oh, I have one thing to say. I just remembered that we're supposed to take the picture for the yearbook. I know Mr. Pacozius isn't here, but do you think everyone's going to be here on the next one? Take it. Oh, we do it on February 1st, like before. I could see something that I didn't miss.
We all got that?
I would say February 1st or February 8th, just to see what my schedule, is that okay?
Yeah.
And I will let you guys know, February 1st or February 8th, but I will text you guys.
Can you contact me regarding that also?
Thank you.
Good? Motion to adjourn. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody.